stranger to armed conflict. Since the country's independence, no central government has fully controlled the country's peripheries, where a range of armed ethno-nationalist movements have fought for autonomy for decades. But the breadth and depth of the Myanmar crisis today is unprecedented. For the first time, over a million people in Myanmar are internally displaced. The World Bank estimates that the economy shrunk by a fifth in 2021, and it is not growing this year. Food insecurity affects a quarter of the population. And in some regions, demands of insurgency and counterinsurgency leave civilians with difficult choices on a daily basis between violence and nonviolence, and between principle and self-preservation. The double I double S has long taken an interest in events in Myanmar, including at the Shangri-La Dialogue. Four years ago in this room, we held a special session on the atrocities in Rakhine State. On that panel was Myanmar's then national security adviser, Utong Toun. He returned the following year for a panel on the security implications of regional infrastructure development. It is a sign of Myanmar's troubled situation that today Utong Toun is one of many advisers to the previous government to have been jailed by the State Administrative Council. This year, we will have no representatives of Myanmar on this panel because it is reserved for government officials, and the identity of the legitimate government of Myanmar is in dispute. But we have several eminent scholars of Myanmar origin around the table, and we will hear from them later this afternoon. But first, we will turn to four diplomats from the United Nations, Malaysia, Thailand, and the United States with responsibility for working toward a resolution of the conflict and alleviation of the resulting humanitarian crisis. We have, to my left, Dr. Nolene Haizer, the United Nations Secretary-General's special envoy for Myanmar; Dato Sri Saifuddin Abdullah, the Minister of Foreign Affairs of Malaysia; Ms. Pampimon Kanchanala, adviser to the Minister of Foreign Affairs of Thailand and special envoy of the Minister of Foreign Affairs of Thailand on Myanmar; and finally, Mr. Derek Chilley, the councillor of the United States Department of State. We are also pleased to be joined by Dr. Vivian Balakrishnan, the Minister of Foreign Affairs of Singapore. I will invite each of our panelists to offer five minutes of remarks before I open the floor to questions, and I'll turn first to Dr. Haizer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. First of all, it's a real honour to be here with very distinguished panelists, and also thank you to the audience for participating in this event. I have taken, I'm now the Secretary-General's special envoy for the last six months. During this period, unfortunately, the situation in Myanmar has worsened. Both sides think that they can prevail through the use of violence, and their positions have hardened. There's no desire to have talks, to engage in talks about talks, to find a political way out of this crisis, and to de-escalate the violence. So what we have today, that we are experiencing, is the aerial bombings that all of you know, with horrible consequences. We have the release of the militias by the military. But on the other side, from the resistance side, the focus has also shifted to a people's defence war. And there are now about 600 PDFs. And what have happened is that there is a missing middle, a missing middle, to try to find a way out of a crisis that could be more inclusive and more just. And what is the consequence of that kind of hardening? Is the impact on the people? Here, in this conference, we hear about security, but at the end of the day, true security is about what happens in people's lives on the ground. And let me give you the figures first. In terms of humanitarian need, the figure stands at 14.4 million today. One million people have been displaced internally. And this includes, of course, the 320,000 that were displaced before the coup. But almost the majority of that comes from the Brahma heartlands of the, from Magwe, as well as from the dry zone and the Sagai region. At the same time, we have figures that have shown that because of the release of the militias, villages, homes, civilian infrastructure have been burnt. And just between the 1st to the 15th of May, 6,000 homes in the central region have been But that is the consequence of the crisis. But what is often untold when we're talking about the humanitarian or the issue of people's security is the combination of the political crisis with what I call a multi-dimensional crisis of collapsing state institutions. The figures that I have are tragic, and it provides a tragic human face to what all this is about, the deep human suffering. Half of Myanmar's population today live in poverty, and most of them in hunger. And in the situation of collapsing state institutions, we have 7.8 million children out of school. Within the last two years, there have been a decline of about 80% just to school enrollment alone. The health infrastructure has fallen. The food sector has collapsed. Agricultural production is devastated in many areas of the country. And the formal economy cannot deliver the type of economic security that the people need. What does it all mean when you combine that with shifting populations running away from aerial bombings and increasingly invaded by militias and finding themselves with no place anymore to hide? There are so many human stories because behind every figure, there's a tragic human story, and I've heard all of them, and I get all of them literally every day. There is deep human suffering that cannot be sustained. Now, how do we respond? Let me tell you what I have to do and my mandate as the special envoy of the UN. The Security Council have asked me to work very closely with ASEAN, and have asked us to ensure that we coordinate, that I coordinate my work with the ASEAN envoy, as ASEAN implements the Five Point Consensus. And I know that Foreign Minister Saifuddin will be talking about that, so I won't go too much about that. But since I was asked to complement the work of ASEAN and also to engage with all stakeholders, so let me explain to you how I interpret what complementing the work of ASEAN means to me and how I've been carrying that out over the last six months. To start off, I drew three concentric circles. Three concentric circles as the wheels that need to be remembered if we are to move forward. At the center of it is the Myanmar-led process, reflective of the will of the people. In other words, the solution has got to have roots in the country, and it has to be Myanmar-led, based on the will of the people. The next circle, I call it regional unity. We have to find a united regional solution. Of course, ASEAN with a Five Point Consensus is driving that, but it has to be ASEAN plus. It has to involve all the neighbouring countries of ASEAN and beyond. It means we have to engage China, we have to engage India, Thailand, besides just being a member of ASEAN, has shares a long border. We can't forget Bangladesh, that's hosting 1 million Rohingya population in its camps. We can't forget Laos, even though it has a short border, we can't forget Japan. But on top of that, when I listen to the voices of the people, they say, "We are fighting for a future, but it's an uneven playing field." So we need the support of the international community. And the international community, and I represent an international community because I represent the UN Secretary-General, and I report to the Security Council and to the General Assembly, where most, all of you are member states. Now, but for the international community, it has to be a more coordinated and strategic support to that regional unity and to the Myanmar-led process that is so critical. But all this has to drive what I call my multi-pronged strategy, that is reflective of what is happening on the ground, and also some of the pathways that have been created to move forward. So what are these? Until the violence stop, we have to pay attention to the humanitarian issues. The people, as I mentioned, are suffering and are in deep need of humanitarian assistance. And I'll come back to that in terms of the way forward. The second track is, of course, how do we return to civilian rule that is reflective of the will of the people? And what do we have on the table at this moment? Of course, you have the Five Point Roadmap of the SAC, but that's being contested, and I'll come back to some of that a little bit more. And the third track is that we need, at the end of the day, to build greater effective democratic institutions in the country, more inclusive democratic institutions. And the fourth track is the fact that we cannot anymore forget the plight of the Rohingyas. Now, moving, how have I brought some of this together in the way I carry out my mandate? In terms of ASEAN, I have not, I, as a UN, the UN Charter starts with "we, the peoples", and I've been asked to consult with all stakeholders, and that is precisely what I have done. So I'm very much in touch, and I've built a lot of trust with many of the key local actors. So what is the message from the people whom I've engaged with? In terms of the humanitarian networks, the local humanitarian networks that I have engaged with, their message is that when you come to deliver humanitarian aid, please do not use only the SAC's channel, because you need to look at the situation from the bottom up. It's not a situation of top-down. And what it means is that the SAC is not in control of many of the territories, and you have ethnic administrations that have got to be respected. And even with that, many of the last mile delivery happens to come in from the informal local humanitarian networks, many of whom are informal, and many of whom are actually villagers who know the local situation very well. Yeah, all right. And then, and so let me now move on to the elections. As far as the people are concerned, unless the election is inclusive and there is political, there's no fear in the expression of their political will, there's not going to be the legitimacy that will allow the government to go back to a proper civilian rule. In other words, if anything, it will be the trigger point for greater violence. In terms of the local administration, we need to understand that in the case of Myanmar, many of the people's resistance or resilience that have been built over the years to handle with much of the conflict have been built at the local level. And therefore, we need to really begin to invest in that. And this is what I have done, basically with the Minister of Foreign Affairs of Indonesia. We are establishing a platform on women, peace, and security. Because if I were to tell you the stories that I've heard, women have suffered, have been the agent of much of this change, but at the same time, there are also many of the village chiefs at the local level, and they have all the connections that are needed, especially to deliver at the last mile. And their voices need to be amplified in terms of the type of future that they want. And the second one, and I'll stop here in two, in two minutes, sorry, Erin, but do give me some kindness. So, but the other issue is actually a partnership with another Foreign Minister of ASEAN, and this is for the Rohingya issue. Foreign Minister of Malaysia and I are looking at the possibility of initiating a joint initiative on the education and employment of Rohingya refugees. I'm sure Foreign Minister will say much more. My last message to the group is this: The people of Myanmar has changed. There is a new dynamics. The youth have actually created a solidarity that has been able to go beyond ethnicity and religion. There is greater discussion on inclusiveness and the type of future that they want. At the end of the day, they are fighting for a future, an inclusive federal democratic union that can, the word they use, and this is not mine, a reset to address the democratic, the human rights, and the governance deficit of Myanmar. That is the future they want. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Dr. Haizer, for those very insightful comments. I'd now turn to Dato Sri. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Assalamualaikum. Salam sejahtera. Good afternoon. The situation in Myanmar is a real test for the entire region. It is a complex crisis of multiple dimensions, but most importantly, and this is a real crisis, it is descending rapidly into some kind of a civil war. And notwithstanding the numbers before the coup, between February 2021 until the end of May, there had been at least 12,169 armed clashes and attacks in Myanmar under the junta, and junta forces had arrested more than 13,000 or close to 14,000 civilians. It was reported that at least 5,646 civilians had been killed, a number of unprecedented, the number is really unprecedented in the country's modern history. And this includes MPs, journalists, humanitarian workers, CSOs, CSO members, and students. The number of IDPs exceeded 1 million. The Restoration Council of Shan State and the New Moon State Party signed several agreements with the regime, but the other major armed groups refused to attend the junta-led peace The healthcare services has collapsed, vaccination rates are down, and so on and so forth. The violence and brutality in turn has not succeeded in crushing the resistance. Instead, it makes the resistance stronger, and I'm referring here to the NUG, the NUCC, and so on and so forth. Malaysia was among the most active ASEAN member states calling for an emergency ASEAN meeting. At the emergency ASEAN meeting, we emphasized the need for an immediate cessation of violence, the appointment of an ASEAN special envoy, for the envoy to visit Myanmar, and for the delivery of humanitarian assistance, all of which are included in the Five Point Consensus. Following the Five Point Consensus, we also took the position that the commander-in-chief should not be invited to the ASEAN summit. Malaysia does not recognize the SAC government, but we do engage them as needed. We also do not, at this point, recognize the NUG as a government, but we do acknowledge that the NUG, as well as the CPH, the NUCC, the EAOs are important stakeholders that must be engaged. I have myself engaged the NUG on several occasions, and the NUCC too, and had the honour of meeting the NUG Foreign Minister in person recently in DC, in Washington DC. I have also suggested many times to the ASEAN special envoy and my fellow foreign ministers in ASEAN that ASEAN engage informally with the NUG and the NUCC. They must be part of our consultation if we want to drive the agenda successfully forward. Now, what is next? It is now one year plus after the, well, we agreed on the Five Point Consensus, but unfortunately, there has not been much progress. If I may highlight three points, but before that, I must underline the fact that we have to look for new and creative ways that are inclusive and comprehensive, new and creative ways. We must go back, number one, we must go back to the drawing board and develop a more detailed roadmap for the implementation of the Five Point Consensus. By more detailed roadmap, for instance, we have to really look at the timeframe. We don't seem to have the kind of, I wouldn't say not lacking in terms of urgency, but we don't really have a timeframe. When do we get certain things done? There must be some low-hanging fruits, but now it's not about low-hanging fruits. Vaccination and humanitarian is no longer low-hanging fruit. It is like a must, that it has to be done now. And who do we meet? The Five Point Consensus did not outline who are the stakeholders, and we have been saying it has to be the NUG, it has to be the NUCC, it has to be the NLD, Aung San Suu Che, and the former president, and so on and so forth. Number two, we must develop a credible plan and mechanism for the delivery of what is now most important humanitarian assistance, without hindrance or discrimination. We must ensure there is access to everyone, and this includes the cross-border assistance and so on. And I agree with Dr. Nolene that we must include some of the local CSOs and so on and so forth. And most importantly, you cannot allow, I know we have the task force that has been decided at the meeting chaired by the ASEAN special envoy, but I think we need to have more people on the task force, we need to have more international presence in the task force. We regret that at that meeting, the UN special envoy was disinvited, but I think that has passed now, besides bringing her in, but also bringing more international presence. And probably some ASEAN member states would like to commit their CSOs. And Malaysia has already said that, mercy Malaysia, is already to be part of the task force. They are now doing the assessment. We have concern that if it is not transparent, then the assessment may not be, you know, very inclusive. And number three, we must develop regional or regional approaches and initiatives that strengthen the protection of the civilians who have fled the country, including the Rohingya refugees. In Bangladesh, there are 1.2 million of them, and about 100 and, well, there are 156,000 Myanmar refugees in Malaysia, more than 100,000 are Rohingyas, but there are Chins, Arakanis, Bama, Kachi, Karim, Mon, Shan, and so on in Malaysia. And our main concern is, of course, looking after their welfare, trying to improve their education, and looking at the possibilities of employment. And I have been discussing these two points with Dr. Nolene earlier. And just to inform you also that the OIC Commissioners for Human Rights are trying to organize a conference on the rights to education for refugees in Kuala Lumpur, probably in Tobat, and among others, we will be talking about the Rohingya situation. So, thank you. Terima kasih.
Thank you, Dato Sri. Now I'll turn to Kum Pampimon for her remarks. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Erin. After having heard all of what was said today at this panel, it reminds me of the danger of the fog of war and the dogs of war. Truth is the first casualty of war and the Rashomon story. I have adopted a Myanmar girl who is now 10 years old. I raised her since she was born. And what I told Foreign Minister Wunna when I saw him in Nepal was, "I only have one agenda," and it's to make this girl, when she goes, she returns home to Myanmar, she can be proud of her country. Now, the subject that we are supposed to address today is Myanmar, the path forward, and how the international community can best assist the people of Myanmar. I'd like to begin by quoting Winston Churchill, who said, "The farther backward we can look, the farther forward you can see." So backward we must look in order to understand how and why Myanmar is where she is today and where she could go, should be going forward, and how. Let me go back a little bit. During the British Burma in 1885 to 1948, the country had the second largest, highest GDP per capita in Southeast Asia. She was also the world's largest exporter of rice while other colonies suffered mass starvation. In 1920s, Rangoon, or Yangon today, exceeded New York City as the greatest immigration port in the world. So Burma military during that time was reduced to almost a nonentity after having been forcefully replaced by foreign and ethnic minority soldiers. These were the memories that keep reminding. Fast forward to today, why we cannot undo February 1, 2021? We must not get stuck in cancelled rhetoric. Condemnations, sanctions, ostracization, punitive measures have reached the diminishing return. If the goal for Myanmar is for the country to return to normalcy or return to some form of democratic rule, then we must set out a roadmap like the Foreign Minister of Malaysia said, and a modest operating to reach the goal. The Thad Madhav Perth's five-part roadmap stated that there would be a new election in August 2023. The validity and practicality of this statement may be disputed by some crontarians, but for the sake of moving the peace settlement process forward, we must for the sake of moving the peace settlement process forward, we must have to take it at face value, to have a suspension to disbelief and work from there. Good faith effort will have to be made to create a neutral space and platform to bring together all the stakeholders in the Myanmar conflict, both domestic and international, to identify the necessary and sufficient conditions for the intended outcome, as well as the needed steps and mechanisms towards the goalpost. International agency and community can help bringing all Myanmar stakeholders to the dialogue table. Progressive incentives have to be provided. The process may take, may take two steps forward and one step back, but patience is required as long as it's moving in the right direction, because the alternative is not an option. We should also be reminded that democracy is a conflict resolution that provides political and social space for parties of conflict to agree they could coexist, albeit temporarily. For Myanmar, it is a process that so desires of democracy from the bottoms up, not something so alien that we shove it down the throat of the Myanmar people and authorities. It is fact that there's no perfection on this side of the grave. Assistance in humanitarian and economic development per the ASEAN five-point consensus, that might include amnesty, I may say, could begin even before the election. Such assistance may not be politicized. I must emphasize, it must be transparent and fair. The Myanmar peaceful political settlement is a chance for ASEAN to finally demonstrate to the world that ASEAN centrality is not a misnomer. It is not in the best of interests of ASEAN to have a political instability in our midst. Protected armed conflict in Myanmar is not in the best interest of the Indo-Pacific region. As the Defence Minister of Indonesia has so succinctly espoused his warning, ASEAN was a crossroad region, and we have survived and prospered because we were able to think outside of the box, like our Malaysian colleague said, and found the Asian way for conflict resolution. Back in 1898, Rudyard Clipping wrote, "This is Burma. It is quite unlike any land you know about." Myanmar today could be a resource-rich nation, and she once had a very promising future. We can facilitate, not dictate, Myanmar to realize her full potential, and to design trust and respect for Myanmar dignity and sovereignty are keys to our successful endeavor. The 54 million people in Myanmar are waiting for us to do the right thing for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Kum Pom Piamon. As the closest neighbor to Myanmar on this panel, we appreciate your comments and coming here today to speak on this issue. Now I'll turn to the Counselor of the US Department of State, Derek Chulay.
Great. Thanks, everyone, for having me here today. It's really an honor to be on this panel with Pauline and Nolene and Minister, and I really appreciate all of your presentations. Also, a really big thanks to Aaron and the team here at IIIS for all of the work you've been doing on Myanmar, for all of the focus and attention you've been putting out, and all the expertise you've been bringing to what is truly a very difficult problem. The current situation in Burma remains a top priority for the Biden administration. You heard the Secretary of Defense earlier today speak about this region as a center of strategic gravity for the United States and geopolitics generally. And so therefore, what happens in Burma matters a lot to what happens in Southeast Asia, which matters a lot to broader Indo-Pacific, which therefore matters a lot to core US national security interests, which is why we have been very focused on the situation in Burma. Nolene has spoken very eloquently about the horrors we are seeing on the ground. And in the 16th month since the coup, we've seen the Burmese military regime escalate its conflicts, having killed more than 1,800 million people, terrorize many civilians. We've got more than half a million displaced, imprisoned tens of thousands, committing egregious abuses against those in detention. The regime has shown a complete unwillingness to negotiate or seek any kind of off-ramp here. Instead, it's attempting to consolidate power and really just ramp up its assault. Yet beneath this horrific brutality, we see a very insecure and isolated regime, one that is facing a growing and resilient popular resistance movement. And while the military claims that it can control the country, in reality, the political-economic control remain contested, and the military regime has shown that it is fundamentally incapable of creating stability. And we're seeing increasing fissures within the military itself. A growing number of countries are publicly engaging with the pro-democracy movement, and many international companies have divested from military-owned enterprises and are increasing scrutiny of the regime's financial transactions, which is further squeezing the military's resources. So the United States' overall goal in Burma remains to foster the conditions that end this conflict and put Burma on a path towards an inclusive, representative, multi-party democracy. And I think the recent Federal Democratic Charter that was released by the Democratic Opposition is quite inspiring. It's quite ambitious. It's an outline for a multi-layered federalism. And as Nolene said, the people of Burma have changed in the last 16 months, and I think we should support them in their ambitions. Now, since the coup, the United States has worked tirelessly with our allies and partners to advance this goal, to achieve an inclusive, representative, multi-party Burma, while also addressing the humanitarian crisis that is caused by the military's brutal crackdown. And let me highlight three important lines of effort of US policy. First, we are stepping up our economic and political pressure on the regime while doing all we can to limit the regime's access to weapons and dual-use technologies. Second, we are supporting the pro-democracy movement. And third, we are working to deliver critical humanitarian assistance directly to the people of Burma. And let me go through these quickly. First, on the point of pressure. Since the coup, the United States, along with other allies and partners, have administered serious sanctions against the Huta. We've sanctioned, the United States has sanctioned more than 70 individuals, including representatives of the military and others that are responsible for the violence. We've also sanctioned 27 entities that are tied to the regime or connected to the regime's supporters. We've also added numerous military entities, including militarily-owned enterprises, to the entity list to ensure that they cannot benefit from US exports. And this ties to the second critical line of effort, and that is support for the pro-democracy movement. Alongside our economic sanctions against the regime, we provided pro-democracy actors with resources, and we've given emergency assistance to well over 1,000 civil society activists. I and my colleagues in Washington have met numerous times with Burmese human rights defenders, representatives of the civil disobedience movement, and senior representatives of the NUG. At the same time that the Minister here was meeting with the NUG Foreign Minister, we also met with her at the State Department on the same day of the US ASEAN Special Summit, and we encourage other countries, either here in Southeast Asia or around the world, to be engaged with the NUG and other democracy actors. Finally, we are providing humanitarian aid directly to the people of Burma. Again, Nolene spoke very eloquently about the urgent humanitarian needs that are faced there. I recently was near Maesat in Thailand, where we were able to look and meet with folks that the United States is helping to assist through NGOs. The United States remains the largest single donor in response to the crisis in Burma. We provided more than $434 million in lifesaving humanitarian assistance and nearly a quarter of a billion dollars in COVID-19-related assistance to the people of Burma. Now, in all of this, we are coordinating closely with our allies and partners. You heard the Secretary of Defense talk this morning about the strategic power of partnerships, and this is very much animates our approach to Burma, working with ASEAN and its members, but also with other countries, the United Kingdom, European Union, Australia, Japan, Republic of Korea, and others. Last year's ASEAN landmark decision not to allow senior regime representatives to attend high-level ASEAN events sent a powerful message to the regime that it will remain isolated from its immediate neighbors until it stops the violence and it comes to the negotiating table. At the US ASEAN Summit last month in Washington, our leaders released a joint vision statement with that reaffirmed ASEAN unity on this issue. The statement called for a timely and complete implementation of the five-point consensus and the release of all political detainees, while highlighting ASEAN's efforts to facilitate a peaceful solution in the interest of the people of Burma. And the joint vision statement also welcomed the work of the ASEAN Special Envoy and the Secretary-General Special Envoy. And I do want to take the opportunity here to thank Nolene Heizer for your efforts to engage the various communities and stakeholders, to garner support in the international community to help mitigate and end this crisis. Now, in looking ahead to the future, as the military's position weakens, and it is weakening, we must be prepared to continue seeking creative opportunities to support the democracy movement while also increasing pressure on the military. We cannot lose our focus. And we also have to prepare ourselves for the year that follows. The regime does claim that it wants to hold elections in 2023. We think that that prospect is a farce. We don't believe that we should endorse such elections. We don't see how they can have any chance of being free or fair, given that the regime has imprisoned or intimidated nearly all credible political contenders. And in fact, it's threatening and might execute some in the coming days. So instead, we must increase the pressure on the regime to release political prisoners, not execute them, enter a credible and inclusive dialogue with the pro-democracy movement, which is going to be a necessary step in any legitimate political process. But we ought to be really clear here. The road ahead is going to be very difficult. There are no silver bullets. But even with everything else going on in the world and all the demands that we have been talking about over the course of this conference and that we are facing every day in Washington, we must remain focused on supporting the people of Burma and their struggle to put their country on the path towards democracy. The people of Burma have suffered under the military's tyranny for far too long, and they deserve our full support. So I want to thank you all again for the time. I'm looking forward to the discussion. There's a lot of expertise around this table, and we need all the ideas we can get to help solve this incredibly difficult and urgent crisis. Thank you again.
Thanks, Counselor. We'll now turn to the floor for questions. If you have a question, can I just ask that you insert your name tag into the AV system so that I can see your name and call on you? In some cases, that may be difficult toward the end of the table. Yes, Sui Lee Wi from the New York Times. We'll take a few questions a row, but let's start with Sui Lee.
Thank you. What are the specific ways ASEAN can hold the regime accountable if it continues to fail to uphold the five-point consensus? Is the expulsion of Myanmar from ASEAN on the table at all? Thank you.
Adnitya Malin from the Anagata Initiative.
Hi. Thanks to all speakers. Very quickly, I think I want to thank everyone, and I think the expression here generally is of a concern and a genuine wish for a resolution. I think the issue for those of us who are observing from the ground and across the world is seeing a situation, one where I think the military as an institution no longer has the same kind of dominant role it once had, right? And I think the Counselor spoke on this issue, where it is not just an issue, a matter of its control over the bureaucracy or the economy, but also militarily, where it is being severely challenged across multiple fronts. This is not new, by the way. This is not just a post-coup issue. This is also quite clear prior to the coup in places like Rakhine. So you have a situation where there isn't necessarily the same kind of actor that maybe once was the case. Moreover, it no longer has the legitimacy nor the support of the will of the people, as has been expressed multiple times. And without any of those components, how then do the representatives around the table see any kind of possibility that, of a resolution that involves the military? Because this is no longer the dominant force or driving force that it may once have been. Moreover, I think a couple of you have also touched on the issue of what's happening on the pro-democratic opposition, right? And I think there's some very significant dynamics, I would say even unprecedented in terms of the level, the kinds of mechanisms and platforms for trust-building and dialogue and cooperation that is taking place to very much address those historical issues and those issues of legacy around identity, around belonging. And when you have these twin dynamics, where there is a emergent and, I think, very real substantial political progress on one hand, perhaps far beyond what was attempted during the past decade of, you know, attempted ceasefires and peace processes. And on the other hand, you don't necessarily have the same kind of actor. This is, the kind of structural hurt that I think the military is going through is a significant development, right? So with these twin dynamics, how do you ensure that any kind of resolution, while, you know, the desire for a swift resolution is, of course, warranted, how do you ensure that it's also principled, that it is substantive, and that it's actually viable?
There's a little bit of confusion with the microphones in the room. The microphones here work differently than in the plenary hall, so please don't press the speak button if you want to intervene. You'll have to catch my attention by waving first so that none of us get a headache from the AV. All right. I saw in order Sharon Seiya, and that'll be three interventions, so we'll go back to the panel after that. But Sharon Seiya, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Aaron. I have a question pertaining to, actually, two questions for Mr. Saifuddin. So you mentioned about, you know, needing creative ways that are inclusive and comprehensive and a detailed roadmap to implement a five-point consensus. Does this mean going back to seek consensus from the ASEAN member states as well as Myanmar on this detailed roadmap? And how easy is that, given the current divisions within ASEAN? What are your views on setting a terms of reference for the ASEAN Special Envoy, specifically to lengthen the term of the Special Envoy so that we see more continuity and perhaps hopefully better results? Then the last point is, you know, within ASEAN, I think this point about unity before centrality. So we've been talking about centrality for a long time, but clearly, the absence of unity is an impediment to centrality. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. I think what we'll do is we'll go first to Counselor Chulay to address the question of, Sui Lee Wi's question about what can we do to increase the pressure on the regime, and then also to Dr. Sri Saifuddin Abdullah for his comments on that as well. And then we'll address the other two questions after that.
Sure. Well, I'm not going to get into whether Myanmar should remain in ASEAN or not. I think it's important, though, that ASEAN sticks to what it had agreed to, which is that as long as the regime continues to conduct itself in the way it has, and particularly as things are getting worse, which unfortunately I think they only are, that they should not participate at the political level in ASEAN meetings. I was at the meeting, the special summit meeting, at a table that looked a little bit like this with the leaders, and there was an empty chair with a placard Myanmar with no one sitting behind it. And I think that was an important symbol of the moment. It was a necessary symbol. But I think for the United States, working with our allies and partners, we are constantly thinking about ways that we can use whatever leverage we have to continue to pressure, to incentivize the regime, to stop its behavior, to enter into negotiations, and importantly, return or put Burma on a path to democracy. And so we are always looking at new measures we can take, sanctions in particular, in that spirit. Also, I think it's very important that we continue to work to cut off the resources to the regime in terms of its military capabilities. We have called for an arms embargo. I think it's unfortunately unrealistic that we'll get any action. I think it's unfortunately unrealistic that we'll get any action in the U.N. Security Council on that anytime soon, but nevertheless, the United States and many other partners have signed on to a pledge publicly to say that we should stop arms sales to Myanmar. And I think this is something all of us should talk to our Russian friends about because right now they are taking advantage of the situation and only increasing arms sales to Myanmar. And I think that's just further evidence of Russia's outlook on the world right now as we're seeing in Ukraine as well. So I think pressure on the regime is an important component. It's not the only component. Our policy, as I made clear, is not simply one of pressure, but I think as long as a regime is conducting itself the way it has, this pressure is warranted and it should increase.
Dr. Sri, could I ask you to address that question, then, also the question about the lengthening the term of the Special Envoy from Sharon Seiya?
Yeah. I don't think anyone of the foreign ministers in ASEAN have ever spoken about expelling Myanmar. I think the only debate that we have had, if not within us but also with others, is on the issue of non-interference. But I have raised the idea of it's not about non-interference. We should hold this principle about non-indifference, which is even more important. How do we put more pressure? I think there is a combination of a couple of things. Number one, as mentioned by Mr. Chollet just now, put more pressure. But perhaps another way is to talk to people whom the junta would want to listen. We have to also try that area. And if the junta is not going to listen to any one of us from ASEAN, then we have to look at ASEAN dialogue partners that the junta may want to listen. I was told that originally there was this discussion on how long and who is to be appointed as the Special Envoy. We now have two Special Envoy, the former Foreign Minister of Brunei Darussalam and the current Deputy Prime Minister and Foreign Minister of Cambodia. I think they are trying their level best to fulfill their mandate. Do you want to relook at, well, I would like to say, I think we need to strengthen the role of the Special Envoy. I do not want to jump the gun. I haven't spoken to my colleagues yet. I don't think it is the right and appropriate moment to give ideas, but we are meeting informally in Delhi for the ASEAN India Foreign Ministers Meeting on the 16th and 17th of June. Then I think in that informal meeting, I would ask my friends to seriously look into how can we strengthen the role of the ASEAN Special Envoy, including the roadmap. I was alluding to the roadmap briefly in terms of listing down actual things that we need to do within certain specific timeline. Thank you.
Dr. Heizer, and then Khoong Paimon, I wonder if you could both address in that order the question about how can we imagine a future in Myanmar given the military has lost so much support? From Adnanta Malin.
Maybe let me go back to the time when I did have the opportunity to engage with the military, but with a different group of leaders. And at that time, given the historical experience of Myanmar, the military sees itself as the glue that holds the country together, right? And in fact, the way they conceptualize themselves is very different from the other experiences that I've had dealing with conflict situation that involve military. Normally, it's a military within a state. In Myanmar's case, their mindset is such that it is the state within a military. So that is really something that is very hard to fully understand. But given the fact that they actually underestimated the response and the change in the population, given the 10 years, not just because of the 1st of February, but the 10 years of at least the road towards democracy, and the fact that there was internet connection, people were willing to travel, there was education, there was interaction, there were businesses, and so on, the people changed, and the young have changed the most. And they will not accept what their grandfathers accepted, their great-grandfathers accepted. They want a different future, and they can see what that different future can mean if they can have a more inclusive society. And that, in fact, is what they have been struggling with. And the way that, there is no way, I mean, somebody has to start talking with this group of the military, this group of leaders, in a sense that we have to look for a different glue for Myanmar. The thing that will hold Myanmar together is inclusiveness. People are more sophisticated than they think. The, I mean, if you talk to some of the people whom I have spoken to, they are willing to change structures. They are willing to make the changes so that their children can have a much better future. And they're willing to actually mend some of the historical divides along religion, along ethnicity, and they are willing, in fact, I mean, talking about it, there is already, it's hard to even explain this, that whilst you have the military, but actually on the ground, there is actually local democracy, in the sense that you have actually administrative structures that are, that involve people, that involve citizenship, there are negotiations, and so on. So really, the structures that are at the local level can be strengthened. So in a way, greater autonomy to different administrative structures. So it's really starting to build some of the structures from the bottom up. So again, I think if we are to resolve, I don't think we can. At this moment, it's going to be a long journey, but I've already seen some cracks. It's hairline cracks, but I think we need to open these cracks to let the light in. And what are some of these cracks? It's the fact that people feel very strongly, or some of the leaders feel very strongly that they have to make some changes on the ground because their people are suffering. And they are willing to come together, and in fact, they have asked me to consider to establish a platform where there can be greater inclusive dialogue, not so much for solving the political side, but to address very specific problems that need to be resolved. And the main problem that has to be resolved now is the humanitarian and protection needs of the civilians and of the people, especially of the women and children. If I were to tell you the number of children imprisoned under the age of 12, you'll be really shocked. So there are a lot of protection needs that have not been addressed. People are suffering really badly, and people are trying to find solutions. And if we can bring different stakeholders together to solve concrete problems, that will start the building block of confidence building. So I would, I always like to start from bottom up and from real problems where people having real solutions are willing to come together to make some of the adjustments. Let me stop there.
Khoong Paimon, I wonder if you agree with that assessment that the military has lost too much support to maintain the role it's traditionally held?
I agree that the society has changed, and it's, there's an underestimation on the part of the military about the coup and what would follow the coup. However, I would like to emphasize that we are looking at a structured political structure that hasn't been so flexible. It's pretty rigid, and there's a reason, one reason for it is that you have to deal with over 100 minority groups in the country, and most of them want to become independent. Then the military see themselves as the glue, as Noorin said, that hold to center together. However, it doesn't mean that by now, I think that they must have realized that time has changed. But life is a game of inch. You can't force a wholesale change on the military and expect them to become flexible. So this is where diplomacy plays a role. And, you know, for Thailand, we don't, to have a neighbor which is not stable is not in the best interest of ours. So we are trying to do everything possible to bring them to the fold. And one reminder is, if you're talking about multi-stakeholders in Myanmar, the military is one stakeholder. So we, somebody has to talk to them. And by excluding them, by chiding them out from any political forum or international forum is, in a way, to give all the prerogative of decision-making to the military. We don't have a role to play at all if we continue to exclude them. Thank you.
Thank you, Khoong Paimon. We'll go back to the floor for questions. I saw Leon Wang Kit from Channel News Asia. We'll go to you first. Can we get the floor microphone turned on?
Sorry. Counselor Chalay, you've urged ASEAN member states to engage more publicly with the NUG. I have three questions in relation to that. One, why do you think there's reluctance among the ASEAN member states to do so? Two, how do you view or perhaps reconcile violence that's associated with the NUG and engaging the NUG? The NUG's Defense Minister, Uyemon, has also urged Western countries to supply with weapons. Under what conditions would the U.S. consider such an appeal? Thank you.
Okay, we'll take that one on notice, and then I'll come to Lilian Phan.
Thank you, Aaron. This is a question for Counselor Chalay. I chair the Rohingya Working Group for the Asia-Pacific Refugee Rights Network, and we noted that the U.S. government in March announced that the U.S. government had determined that the violence committed against the Rohingya was actually genocide, and it's the eighth time that the U.S. has recognized a genocide worldwide. Given that President Biden's administration has also pledged to raise the cap of refugee admissions to a much higher rate than the previous administration, can we expect to see an increase in resettlement rates from our region and particularly countries like Malaysia for Rohingya refugees? Thank you.
And finally, Pon Quan Swasthakthi from Thomas Satt University.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you for being able to pronounce my last name as well. Thank you so much for very insightful thoughts on the topic. I have two questions, one particularly addressing the entire panel, and one I would like to address to Khoong Paimon. The first one would be on the pressures. We've seen a lot of pressures putting on the regime. I would like to see or hear your assessment of whether or not those pressures have been playing out, what are the reactions of the regime so far in response to these pressures, and what would be the optimum or optimal pressures given to Myanmar without actually giving pressures on the people in the country, affecting people in the country as well? And secondly, addressing to Khoong Paimon, given that, you know, as an outside observer, Thailand seems to be a very close friend of the Burmese regime. That's the elephant in the room. And I know that you actually mentioned that someone needs to talk to the regime in order to persuade them to, you know, either negotiate with other stakeholders or, you know, come into conclusion on how to move forward. Does Thailand or the Thai government willing to play that role? Or what are the discussions that are going on behind the scene? Is Thailand playing the role of persuading the regime to come into the table and discussing the way to move forward? Thank you.
We'll take just one more before we go back to the panel. Khoong Pita Lumjaranat from Move Forward Party.
Hi. My name is Pita, Member of Parliament, Thailand. My question is more upfront and more action-oriented. It's moon season now in Myanmar, and cyclone is coming in October, so the insufficient humanitarian assistance is about to get more inefficient. So what are the ways that we could start negotiating, mobilizing, organizing, and delivering all this humanitarian assistance to the people who are in need at the moment? Thank you.
Can we start with Counselor Chalay answering the two questions, the first two questions?
Sure. Thanks for those questions. On why there's some reluctance on behalf of other ASEAN, some of the ASEAN countries on engaging the NUG, I can't speak for them, of course. We will continue to urge ASEAN countries to engage with the NUG. We will continue to do so ourselves, and we, like I said, regularly are engaging with them virtually or now in person, and we'll continue to do that, and we hope that they follow the example of Malaysia has set. In the meantime, though, engaging not just with the NUG, but with the NUCC and other civil society actors, there's a lot we can do to try to help build their capacity. I think we need to be preparing for a future Burma, a Burma that is fully democratic and representative of its people. There are, everything from supporting defectors in the meantime to preparing to have a professional military and a professional police, to building capacity and skills, particularly for administration in areas where the regime will be losing control. So that's the kinds of things I think we could be doing with the NUG, in addition to just meeting with them and giving them the stature and credibility I think they deserve, also helping them prepare for the future. On the question of weapons, that's not something we're currently thinking about. And then on the issue of the Rohingya, and as you noted, Secretary Blinken several months ago made, announced the important designation that the State Department made, the events there in 2018 were a genocide. We are doing what we can to support the refugees in Bangladesh and elsewhere from that genocide and, of course, since, because there's been several hundred thousand in addition to that. And we also are very determined to do whatever we can as the United States to help resettle those who have fled that genocide, in the meantime, doing what we can to support them where they are, but also planning for the future. And we'll have more to say about that, hopefully, in the near future. Thank you.
Dr. Sri?
I think the immediate issue is humanitarian assistance. And I said earlier that we need more international presence, and there are people who are capable of doing it. This is not the, this is not natural disaster area like flood or earthquake. This is clashes, and you have people like ICRC who have a lot of experience in, you know, sending out humanitarian assistance. And we need this kind of grouping, so this kind of international organizations to be involved. That's basically what I was trying to allude to earlier. Thank you.
Dr. Heizer?
Let me just keep this very short on the humanitarian assistance. I have been at the border, and I've also engaged with local networks and listened to the community leaders, and I've also engaged with ICRC, Dr. And what I've learned is this. If you, if we, if you, I mean, when it comes to humanitarian assistance, people live at the ground level. And if you look at the ground, it's a mosaic. It's not like there is one structure that you can use to reach all people. And I think when you talk about being creative and being innovative, let's start with the way we actually deliver humanitarian aid. the way we actually deliver humanitarian aid as quickly as possible. There's huge urgency. And therefore, let's provide humanitarian aid where there are administrative structures and networks that are trusted by the people. And make sure that the international partners, including the UN, including ASEAN, including AHA, engage with them in the best way possible, including during the assessment. Now, that's not going to happen unfortunately, as much as I would wish that to happen. Currently, there is an assessment, but it is only allowed in sub control areas, right? So how do we break that impasse? There are people who are willing to come in to have a really, I mean, innovative discussion, Dato. Let us assist that. And they have approached me as a UN Special Envoy to see whether I can begin with convening some of those discussions, to have a what they call, I mean, an inclusive platform to, to at least discuss some of that. And if that can be done together with ASEAN, with the support of the ASEAN Foreign Ministers in partnership and, and as a complement to what ASEAN would be doing, I honestly think we will be able to implement at least one part of the ASEAN Five Point Consensus in a, a way that would deliver greater concrete results to the people on the ground. So that is my hope and that's not my idea, but it came from my consultation with the ground.
Khoong Paimon?
On the humanitarian assistance coordination, Thailand started very early on, even before the ASEAN humanitarian movement. We started right after the coup in, in February. We have held multi stakeholders humanitarian cooperation and we came up with concrete result. And now we have delivered bilaterally things that we knew were needed by the people, like we donated COVID vaccines and not only vaccine, but the resourceful items like masks, syringes and all that, and, and food items. We have engaged private sector to, to do this and we have really good responses from them and we delivered them, this assistance to the Red Cross and they were there. And Thailand has this Delta Center, the satellite center of ASEAN AHA in China. And that we, we sent out several shipment of assistance into Myanmar according to the needs of the people. And we make sure that it, those assistance is, were delivered to the intended recipient. In those cases, the ASEAN ambassadors in Yangon act as the monitoring committee. So they, they, they check, they follow up and follow through with, with delivery of those assistance. So we have done a lot and we, because we believe that it's the right thing to do for the people at Myanmar and it's something that no faction could deny, that they have to reject or turn down the, this assistance. So we hope that it could become a bridge or catalyst for cooperation among all the factions. On the discussion of the engagement with the Tatmadaw, I just want to say that there's no such thing as complete black and complete white in, throughout history of any nation. Somebody has to engage with, people call the Tatmadaw authority in the capital. It's like the, the, there's a house next door that is on fire or, you know, there's nobody to take care of the grass and mow, mow the lawn. We felt we had to come in to, to fix them. We couldn't do that. We have to get the acknowledgement from them. And remember, we, we always treat everybody with respect. They deserve, everybody deserve it, no matter how bad we perceive them to be, we need to talk to them, engage them. As I said before, otherwise we will leave all the decision making only to them. We have no influence whatsoever and Thailand interest is dependent upon a stable and peaceful Myanmar. Thank you.
Thank you, Khoong Paimon. We'll take one more round of questions. Please raise your hand and I'll come to several of you at once. Yes, Mo Tuzar from the Institute for Southeast Asian Studies first.
Thank you, Aaron. My sincere thanks and appreciation also to the distinguished panel members for, for adding your thoughts and insights on what is an unrelentingly bleak and tragic situation that's happening in Myanmar. Aaron, with your indulgence, I'd just like to revisit one of the points that I, I raised during the launch of the Myanmar Conflict Map briefing yesterday, and that relates to what I talked about precedents and how they matter. And, and this, I think, will also speak to what my friend Nyantha mentioned about the, the role image and reach of the military. Whenever we look at addressing a crisis in the region within the bounds of what regional and international cooperation and diplomacy can do, I think it's very natural that we all look back at what was done in the past, what happened, what went well, what worked well, and that kind of precedent is something that we're also, I mean, from wherever we sit, we're applying to the current crisis of what's happening in Myanmar. But let's also not forget that the military in Myanmar is also working on precedents of its own. And I think they know very well how to manipulate the regional diplomacy space and the international diplomacy space. So I think that's the kind of precedent that we need to look at. But there is also other precedents that we need to be aware of and that, that goes back to the reality that in Burma, in the past, Myanmar today, there has never been practices of coordinating foreign and defense policy. Now, being under authoritarian military rule in the past, I think basically the military leaders never thought about cluing in foreign policy or the, the, you know, the equivalent of the State Department into defense and security matters. And basically, regime security was equated with state security. But, you know, right now, we're looking at things changing on the ground that Dr. Heiser has mentioned. But we need to be aware also that are these same precedents being applied because nothing else has been in practice or because they don't know of what other practices work? And we need to also look at how we can, I think, have that coordination of foreign and defense policy stay on the part of an entity like the National Unity Government. That will also probably bring about more, I think, constructive outcomes when we are engaging with such entities, including the National Unity Consultative Council, on, on, I think, seeing things in, in that broad spectrum. And, and because there is now that willingness towards the kind of consultativeness and inclusiveness that we're seeing. In fact, somebody on the NUCC was commenting at their press launch that they, they operate everything on a consensus and consultation basis, which made me think, then they shouldn't be too hard on ASEAN. Because then they should know what take, what it takes to, to, to reach a decision in agreement among the different stakeholders. But those are the kinds of precedents that I think, it all bears relevance for all of us engaging one or the other. And engagement means with that view towards the kind of capacity building. And I think raising more understanding and awareness of what international human rights law, international humanitarian law entails with those stakeholders all on the ground. And I think with that view of what Dr. Heiser mentioned is, is, is very, is very relevant. And of course, all of these things, we, we also need to look at the fact that everything is being discussed very publicly in the social media space on Myanmar by both sides. So for all of us, you know, sitting around the table, looking at ways and means and channels of constructive outcomes through diplomacy, through diplomatic channels and communication, I think that's another reality. I'd just like to end with an observation about, you know, being proud. I think we're all proud of, those, those of us from, from Myanmar, I think we're proud to be Myanmar. We're not proud of the entity that purports to represent the country that is sitting in Nipido. We're not proud of, of the military as an institution. That's what Nyantha was mentioning. In fact, I think the observation is from a feared institution, it has become a reviled institution. So when we're doing engaging, I think that aspect of awareness also needs to, to be there. And I'll end my intervention, I apologize for taking too much of the microphone space, of an observation that I've been making, looking at different sentiments coming out from the, the sources that I talked to. We also need to be aware of ASEAN cynicism growing among, among not just members of the resistance, but also people that are currently in the civil service, I think. And, and, and I speak as, as someone who, who has been in at the beginning when Myanmar was admitted to ASEAN in 1997 amidst all of, you know, the different criticisms at the time. And as, to borrow the definition of Professor Tomiko, as a loving critic of ASEAN, I think we need to look at what is also fueling this type of cynicism that could translate also into cynicism towards international mechanisms, the international community and the United Nations. And that speaks to what Dr. Heiser talked about, a sustained response. And, and also to what Counselor Sholay mentioned about no silver bullet. It will take time and I think we do need that sustained effort for the sake of the people of Myanmar who have done nothing to deserve the tragedy that they're living through right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mammo. It was, it's very important to us that we have the Myanmar perspective around this table, even if it wasn't on this panel, and I'm sorry that we couldn't include it more often in this discussion. I'd just like to return to our panelists. I know that there were other hands in the room, but we plan to end at 6:30 on the dot. I just want to return to our panelists for two minutes max of closing comments and then we'll conclude at 6:30. Counselor Sholay, did you have a, something to add on that or some closing comments?
Sure, happy to. And, and thank you so much for that last intervention. It was very important and very eloquent. Just a couple of comments in, in response to wrap up here. First, you made this very important point about understanding how the military works to manipulate the region and the international community. It's one of the reasons why we're concerned about this planned election, because I, I think there's no chance it can be free and fair and it can be an attempt to just manipulate the region, the international community. At the same time, I don't think we should sell ourselves short. I, I, my sense is, is that the Tatmadaw is genuinely surprised that they were not allowed to attend ASEAN meetings and that after the first time they were not allowed to attend, that that continued and that they were upset by that. They did not like the fact that they were left out of these meetings. So therefore, there's, it's, it's important to maintain that, that stance. Secondly, on the port, on the importance of humanitarian aid, which has been discussed several times, I think there's no question that we have to do more. The United States, as I said, is already doing a lot, but we're prepared to do more. But we need to find the mechanisms to get more of that assistance in and it cannot be politicized in any way. This unfortunate recent attempt by the AHA Center to get in and do the assessment and we're only allowed access to regime areas does not indicate that the HUNTER is, is engaging in good faith on this. So we need to find ways to get this assistance in, more of this assistance in, into areas that are not controlled by the regime. And then finally, you talked about pride, pride in your country and you should have pride. The tremendous potential, the opportunity within Burma, not just the natural resources, but the potential of the Burmese people is why we are also engaged in this effort. It is a different Burma. And despite the fact that it's very easy to be cynical, given how difficult this problem is, how intractable it seem, how the, how, how few or zero silver bullets there, there seem to exist, there's just this tremendous opportunity and potential and resilience. And that, that positive energy and that hope and that sense of possibility is something that, that, that we need to always keep in, in, in front of our minds to keep us going. Because I do think that there is a way forward, but the key is we all have to be working together on this. So thank you again for your time.
Dr. Sri?
I think we have lined up a number of proposals and what needs to be done. I can only speak on behalf of ASEAN. I think some of us in ASEAN have to really be full time on this thing. Otherwise, we will be moving from one meeting to another, looking at minutes and things like that. We have to be more full time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sri. Dr. Heiser?
When I was given this job by the Secretary General, he said to me, I've given you an impossible job. And what I did then was in my name card, if some of you have already got it, I decided to put a quote. And it says, "It seems impossible until it's done." And that's a quote from Nelson Mandela. So let us draw some of the most amazing, wonderful experiences of how difficult the human journey has been in so many places, very dark places, and yet things were turned around. So when someone asked me, "It is so hopeless, it's so difficult. Do you have hope that things can change?" And I said, "I have hope because the people have hope." And the only way to turn that hope into the type of future they want is what Derek Sholay, Counselor Sholay, you put it very well. It has to be collective power and collaborative leadership. Thank you.
Khoong Paimon, it's your prerogative to close.
Thank you. Norine talked about hope and I remember when we were in Washington recently, somebody asked President Biden about hope and he quoted William Butler Gaye's poem. The name of the poem was Death. So the gist of the poem was that animals do not know, neither have hope or knew death, are not aware of death, but people do. So in hope and death, we have alternate, we have all our life, we have hope and death. So let's, let's continue doing that. And the last word I would have, and this is something that I always talk about it with all my friends who are willing to listen, I quoted George Tchoz, who said, "Truth, trust is the coin of the rim. If there's no trust, no good things will happen. And if trust, good things will happen and the rest is just detail." Thank you.
Thank you, Khoong Paimon. And thank you to all of our panelists for coming to Singapore to engage in these discussions today. And thank you to all of you for coming to, to this discussion. We'll plan to continue to highlight the conflict in Myanmar through our work at the double I, double S, in the hope that providing an analysis and facts and a framework for understanding the conflict leads to greater efforts toward its resolution. If I could just add a, a one housekeeping note, that would be to please take your name tags out of the microphones so that you don't forget them, leave them here and be unable to access the building tomorrow. But thank you all for coming and that concludes the special session.
Thank you.